There under opening hours, there's a. If we would like to pull the individual contracts out for principal contract renewals, is there any motion for that? We can do those individually, it's right out of here together as one.
Do we foresee any problems with moving?
Nope. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the GNS presentative.
Second. And Laura Peters, very nice donations there from the road group, very nice.
The second.
Motion to adjourn.
On the consent agenda?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Move on to public comment, section one signed up for public comment. Great communications, we have lots of thank you notes here, I don't think they're passing them down. Very nice. Looking at those, we move on to BES December report. Questions, comments to Darla and then I'll make sure one.
I'd just like to comment that apparently we got some really great student teachers. I guess they want to hope for the future, I was like, okay, did we hire them?
Yeah, well, some of them already have jobs.
I figured, that does not surprise me.
I mean, I think the student top are real, and they almost all of them have jobs.
Wow.
I'm very confident that they were a very good inaugural class at BES, so we have three, we're getting three this semester, one block two and two block three, so that means two of them will be full-time student teachers, and one like we had this time, and then Matt has two, and I'm not sure what, I think his are block twos.
And Darla and Matt and I took the group out to lunch Thursday, we think there might be one or two applying for an opening or two that we have, maybe three potentially, so cross our fingers, we'll see what happens, but we had a really good conversation, and Lindsay and I, Lindsay.
We're people next time, but you know, like it's hard getting to work, so that was good, and a couple more submitting this week, so.
I will say the compliments were very, I mean, very, very positive.
Yeah, I told this, I told all of our friends to sign up for Burlington, because they haven't been to their school, you know, it's a drive for most of them, so. You know, they're hardcore, but you know, it was, it wasn't even said at our lunch, like when I got going, I was like, I mean, like, I was like, I wasn't excited, but she.
Didn't like the things I saw on Facebook and stuff.
I heard good things.
Very excited to keep up with this.
In middle school and high school, they are at the music concert tonight, so Matt, Jody, Taylor are there, they are, they're going to plan on coming a little bit later, once they're done, so if you have some questions on either of their building reports, you can either answer when they get here, or you can give me some feedback either way, so.
I would comment about the band, I thought the band did a really good job on Friday tonight, looks out of the room.
In high school, we've started getting those reports, that's nice.
Good, good. The weekly newsletter.
Yeah, weekly newsletter, yeah.
Very good.
All right, we can, when they get back here, we can ask questions, we move on to special editor board for Lindsay.
Was it today? So I know that's the question, it's always burning, from the time I submitted that within a week, I think I had hired actually like three people, which was very awesome, encouraging, but unfortunately in Lego Waverly, they've had several resignations effective at the semester too, so it's just kind of shifted the problem, but we did have the hiring fair today, it was not a very, I wouldn't even call it a success, we had one person fill out an application, we did have someone who has worked for us before, is currently subbing, come in and we visited, and so I will just reach back out to her, that is encouraging. You know, I think there's multiple reasons, I think timing is not necessarily, but I also, I guess class half full, I also have like, you know, right the week or so before, I hired several people, and so was that because we had advertisements out there and those things? I don't know, you know, so you know, we're, we're better than we were, and we still have some things to fill, so we're gonna keep going, I did have a really good meeting with Southeast Kansas Works after the insert, or the job fair about some other things, and kind of visited with Craig a little bit today, Crystal Ekton and I met with them about services they provide, and things that we might be able to have in classrooms, like to help just have somebody else besides us talking about the importance of resumes and those things, but also some parent and adult training stuff, they're having problems finding some locations, but like on resume, how to letter and resume, soft skills, how to interview, those things, they are wanting to come out into different communities and put on some of those things, and so I said I felt like that that's something that we would probably be willing to do, and our building, you know, if I volunteered to work that night, and they hosted it, and they ran it, so that might be something that we would depart.
If somebody, if we administer it, and somebody didn't overdose an opioid, so anyway, Lori?
So the state of Kansas allows for pharmacists to dispense this free of charge without a prescription, anything like that, to, if you look on the regulation, there's a list of people, school nurses fall underneath that, and bystanders do as well, so I feel like that is what covers us in the school for using this. You know, the symptoms of opioid overdose can also be the same symptoms for somebody going into cardiac arrest, so if it were given to someone that was not experiencing an opioid overdose, Narcan does not really do any harm in that situation, so that's another benefit. If someone were in crisis due to an opioid overdose, time is critical, and so having in the school district, you know, vaping, it seems to be increasing, just with you guys agreeing to purchase the vape detectors for the bathrooms, you know, it's just becoming more of an issue, and who knows where the little cartridges are being purchased from, and if they're laced with anything that the kids don't know is in there, so that's, Mr. Marshall and I kind of talked about this a few years ago, and decided to table it at that point, because we just didn't feel like it was close to home, and it just seems to be kind of something that, you know, someone knows someone that this has happened to, and it hasn't necessarily happened here thankfully, but it does just, it's very real, very real possibility, so. That's why we decided to go ahead and talk with Carl and Jared, and their consensus was yes, do this, move forward with this if possible, so.
And some school districts make it a policy, others just make it again a practice, if you will, procedures, no different than like you're using an AED if needed, if you need to do the defibrillator, so we just felt like it's just part of our practice to assist someone that's in, we didn't feel like we needed to do a policy, again, some districts are doing policies somewhere, so I don't know, whatever your guys' wish is, I'm fine with that.
I don't think we made a policy that would save someone's life, if we need to, I mean, I just think we just, I mean, you're trained.
And you're gonna train people, I'm not sure it is.
Yeah, it would be like a staff, a staff training for, like my thought is to have one in each building, and it would. I'm not sure how many we can get.
No, I'm talking about people.
Oh, no, no, one, one, one Narcan, one Narcan for each building, training would be probably the entire staff, my helper and the secretary's of course would be the ones most likely if it was someone that presented to the office, but if it's actors, you know.
It could be at a sporting event.
Yes, and that, you know, we kind of need to think a little bit about where we're going to keep it, my fear, you know, just that would be, that's something that we're just gonna kind of have to look at, is if it, how, how that's going to work out with after-hours availability type of thing, so, but.
Definitely under lock and key, but available if needed in the moment, so.
Do the school resource officers carry it on their person, and if so, why don't they do it?
Yes, yes, and they actually, like the grant that I will be applying for is where they get their Narcan from as well, it's the DCCA or DECA, CCA, I don't know how many Cs are in there.
Some Cs.
Yeah, D or C A.
Yeah, that is great.
And in the last item, we talked a bit about this at linkage last month, as well as at the board meeting a little bit regarding substitute solution. Well, first of all, thank you Lori for coming in tonight, for sharing your information, substitute solutions, we've come up with some, I've shared with you and my Friday notes, administrators, directors have had discussions, and so there's a few different things that again, that we could do to help out with the substitute situation. Again, I really believe that the items that, and I have reached out to, so you know, I have reached out to Matt Thompson about if he would be willing, if he, basically I would just create an email saying if any of you are interested in substituting on Fridays, since Southern Coffee County does not have school on Friday, we'd be happy, happy to have you, so he has not responded back to me yet, but I will touch base with him after this board meeting and just see if there's a willingness at least to send out an email, whatever he would like, I'm okay with that, but of the options that are up here, I will say this, administration directors were not necessarily in favor of the premium pay, because quite honestly, we feel like we're back to normal, and we have a lot of our S R funds now for academic type reasons, so would love to be able to give out money, but it's really something that I feel like, in my opinion, it would be best to just go ahead and go with our plan that we put together. The full-time sub option, I really do believe that that, again, that could be a really good idea, are subs that they could be available every day for the second semester, I think that could be very, very beneficial to each building, and they have, I would think that there'd be interest in a full-time sub in each building, again, it would be a cost to the district, but not a great cost, there's some financial numbers that are, I think I've attached, maybe, I'm trying to see if I've attached.
Yeah, you would.
The difference is.
Yeah, so.
So you feel like that's a good solution?
I mean, I think it's returning.
Is that one sub in each building?
For like, if he has to have their own, there's no per se work that day, then if somebody else has a greater need.
Yeah, I talked to Craig after the last meeting, stayed a little bit, I said, you know, if they considered this, I know it's, you know, money, but I mean, it's not that much more money, we're paying subs every day anyway.
I mean, I think it at least gives us some certainty, I mean, like I said, like we have, I mean, we just have a lot of days now that we just, I mean, we, I mean, I've substituted a lot in the last several weeks, just because we don't have, I mean, it would be just great to have one constant person that, you know, I mean, that way the teachers, we can have a day, maybe they can, we can figure it out, let's say like the subs, you know, we can help plan some of that stuff a little bit better, I mean, I just, I think it, in my mind, it's worth a try.
Right, and it's one semester, and if we, it doesn't work, then we are out, nothing, I mean, we're not committing to them another.
No, it's just for one semester, one semester only, and again, you see the difference there, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars approximately per building, so we're only out of about seventy-five hundred to eight thousand dollars to try this, and we can afford this. And so the item, let's see, the next item, three, again, I've already done that, and then the subpay to starting pay, that would be, so for example, custodians and cooks would go from ten fifty an hour to twelve dollars an hour, substitute pay, that's where we have currently happening, so the base starting pay for our custodians and cooks, for example, would be twelve dollars, pairs would be thirteen twenty-five, so if they're subbing for that, they get that starting pay, now, some people might say, well, why are you starting substitutes at the same pay that employees, are you paying them the same thing? Well, is that the right thing to do? Well, remember, full-time employees get benefits, they get leave, and then any other perks of the job being full-time employment, if we do a retention bonus or a premium pay option, things like that, so really, it's, again, they still have the option to say yes or no if they're subbing, and right now, we are not getting really anybody to sub, I'm gonna say, in the cooks and the custodians piece at all, so maybe if we bump it up to that starting pay, who knows, maybe.
Even up there, it's like, and I feel like I did it, I mean, I teased the other, I had a few Christmas gifts, like our student teachers, we got a few of those, we got some college kids back for a few weeks, but their things are start to stop, I mean, they're not permanent, so we're gonna enjoy the good days while we got them, but I mean, I did, you might turn somebody who's a substitute into a full-time person, they come on, they may not want to come on for ten dollars or ten fifty, they might come on for the higher rate, and they might say, I did this every day, it's just maybe a little carrot to do.
If we can get people started, who knows, and then here, the next day or two or three before Friday, we dismiss, I'm doing the little fifteen second, why do I work for the elementary school, middle school, high school, Darla, Matt, and Jody and Taylor gave me some names of some people to hopefully, and it's gonna be a little fifteen second camera slide, and Craig's gonna help me put that together for, for public distribution, so again, and I'll end up the, the public service announcement with, if you're interested, please contact us, we'd love to have you as part of our Burlington Public Schools team, so anyway.
So now, if I understand that you're saying sub, subpay will be, what did you ever say that was starting pay?
Starting pay, yes.
But we are putting a sub in each building for teaching sub, or for cafeteria, or for?
Well, no, that sub would be for certified or classified, so let's say for example, and Darla did a new question.
So subpay, you're talking about for cooks and students?
Correct, yes, the full-time person, well, we're gonna, what we would look to do is potentially, I'm gonna say, put their, their pay at a different rate versus a hundred dollars versus what we pay for subs, because they are guaranteeing they're gonna be with us every day, so let's just say, for example, we say a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for our full-time sub, and so if we do that, then what they're guaranteeing is that they are going to be here, and we're gonna pay them a little bit more. Good, no, good question, very, very good question.
And we think we can fill those positions.
And we talked about it in our administrative meeting, and there were names thrown out that we thought people might be, I mean, interested.
That's everything.
It seems like we have.
I mean, I think everyone has one or two registered person, there could also be somebody that we don't know, one of our student teachers is actually, that we had this time, is actually put in for, so if we're saying now allows them to do their last four weeks, so there's block three, block they can substitute in district, so one of our intern says ask us to sponsor her, to be her substitute district for the last four weeks, and we will get her.
We're hoping crossing our fingers.
Can we move on to border ports?
As far as the fees for resident students and non-resident resident students stay as is, there will be that increase for driver's education teachers, this coming year per negotiations, thirty dollars an hour for the driver education teachers, and so that's, that's driver's education in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
And we still have our current drivers that teach or something.
Yes, we are going to, yeah, we're gonna verify, and hopefully we may be adding one based on that increase in the hourly rate, our hourly salary, we hope, Google.
Any questions, comments? How many non-resident students do we get?
Not very many.
I think I asked that question last year.
Motion to approve driver education fees for the summer of twenty twenty-three at a hundred dollars a student, per resident student, and three hundred for non-resident student and students that.
Motion to say it for St. Vies is last year, we put on our computers. Motion passes six zero. Move on to concrete bids.
Okay, there is a document that you guys have for the different projects that Brad Griffin and I looked at, so I'm gonna just briefly kind of cover those, those areas, and so project one is the area around and behind Wildcat Stadium, the football stadium, if you walk back there, it's deteriorating pretty bad, it's, it's a safety hazard, it's a drip hazard, so that's project number one. And project number two is the high school parking lot, that's another section of the high school parking lot that's really in the worst, 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 I guess, worst situation, if you will, it's, the park is deteriorating, plus on top of that, we're trying to connect it with a, with a new piece, so it's, there's two pieces in there when you're talking with concrete, you got a bad section that you want to try to connect with a new section to make it as solid as possible, so there, there's a piece of, of the high school parking lot that's gonna be replaced. East side B M S sidewalk door, that's on M twenty-three, that's kind of on, I'm gonna say, the gym side of the building, there's a piece of the sidewalk there that's really, it's, it's, it's kind of sunk, it just sunk down, and it's not very even, it's, it's a, it's a safety trip hazard, not a very big piece, but yet it's needed. Let's see, the fourth project, that is, there's an angled sidewalk on the main front entrance of the middle school, that it's just, like I say, it's kind of sunk, and then it's really flaky, the concrete has become flaky, so that's a sign that obviously it's gonna continue to get worse. Project five, the west side, B M S sidewalk door, so that would be on the west side of the building, kind of on the library side, the entrance side, where it's between the middle and the high school, there's just, there's some concrete and steps there that have just sunk, and shipped and just eroded there, and it's not a huge section, but it's something that does need to be, be taken care of. Project six, there's just a piece, a small piece, you might have noticed, between the middle school and the high school, it's kind of by where that USD two four four sign is and the flagpole is, that part of that curb is just almost deteriorated completely. Okay, alternate one is the elementary front entrance, we could do this, but we would like to hold off and wait just a little bit longer, this could be an additional item, depending upon how things maneuver and move forward with the elementary school and the potential options that may come up within the county, and Blenckes Technical College, and the chip, potential chip industry, so we're gonna hold off on that, but that could be an item that could be added, possibly. Alternate two is on the east side doors at B M S, there's another section, a small section there, that just needs to be replaced, again, very small section. Alternate three, west B H S sidewalk, that's the area where it would be the entrance into the, I'm gonna say, the southeast corner of the building there, where Susie Becker's room would be, Chris Barboll, Dirk Over, that hallway, that first southeast corner there, there's a piece of that sidewalk that really needs to be replaced. And then the large ticket item that we thought about doing, at least, we ought to get a, at least a bid on this, so the areas around the track at Wildcat Stadium, so think in terms of the grassy areas outside the track, we thought about trying the concrete those, so we wouldn't have to be mowing around our new turf and our new track, keep the grass, in other words, outside the fence line, at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, we're gonna pass on that, go ahead and mow it, and, you know, yeah, but there's a lot, I tell you, if you go walk the track, you see there's a lot of grass outside, and so we think that, we think that we can maybe mow that at least for another year or two, and maybe do partial pieces of that, plus one of our new mowers is actually a rear discharge mower instead of a side discharge mower, so it's almost like a mulching mower, drops the grass right now, so we're gonna see how that works.
So another thing I had a question on, and it may be a little late now, but there's a lot of that mud jacking or foam jacking going on, so have we looked at any of that on any of these projects to be able to, because some of it, just unlevel sidewalks, unlevel concrete, they're doing those, and they're giving you lifetime guarantees on them, so that certainly has some potential to look at, and I think it, actually I have them looking at one of my deals right now, but.
That's a good question, that was brought up, I think, well, it was brought up with Jeremy and Brad when they went through the process of going through each project, none of these would qualify in that, in that situation, but it could very well be in the future, we might be able to do this. Not only was the unlevel sidewalk piece there, but it was also a deterioration piece, so, but I'm glad you brought that up, and your knowledge with personal construction is helpful for anybody bringing in.
Got a bid for it, because we got a bid, and it was as much as we could.
I think you just.
It depends on what you're, yeah.
Yeah, so with that being said, in talking with Brad Griffin, we went through every item and carefully discussed and decided what needs to be done. Of note, concrete now is a hundred and seventy-five dollars a cubic yard, so if you're doing home projects, you'll have that blocking the rain for, I know it's expensive, it's, it's expensive, and Jeremy thinks it's gonna continue to get higher, at least for another year, so having said that, we would look to do projects one through six, and only alternates two and three for that total of one thirty-six, we had budgeted in this year a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the concrete, there may be another item or two that may come up, for example, the elementary front entrance, that is a possibility that could be, you know, come up, that could be added on, so we give ourselves a little wiggle room there if needed.
Well, I certainly think it's something we are doing good, have staying on top of this concrete.
About the elementary school, but think in terms, when those two buildings were done, not only were we trying to do elementary school, but we're trying to piece together a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars at a time, replacement for concrete that's forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five years old, so it's, yeah, it's, and again, safety piece, you don't want someday to fall, or, you know, trip over a pothole, or whatever, so.
Some grass areas, some bushes, I know people don't love it in the elementary, but I think when you're all concrete, it's too institutionalized, and I like having some of those grassy parts out there, behind the high school, and behind the stadium, and around the track, and in front of the elementary. I know, and I don't know if there's some way we could have a school, or get some, add, you know, some of that.
And that's a good, good comment, and you're right, we don't want to have a school be like that institutionalized piece, and it looks so cold.
Concrete and everything.
Yes, so anyway, so having said that, we talked a little bit, Darla and I, this is a briefing on the entrance of the elementary school, if we were to concrete that, how could we make it kind of, like beautify it? Well, potted plants, seasonal plants, benches, you could make it almost like a courtyard, a, an entryway where it's low maintenance, if you're pulling seasonal plants out of a pot at the end of the, at the end of the summer or whatever, then, I mean, so you, there's, there's certain ways that, that you could make that a little bit, I guess, a little bit better place. That area too would be a protected area from a north wind, there was even a discussion we had, could we put like four square spots, and could maybe a classroom at a time, if they need to go out, and it's really cold, blocking the north wind potentially, do you have, make that a little playground area possibly, so. So there there we we've had that discussion. I don't know exactly what the what the final result will be.
Right, yeah, I just.
Good, 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 good point. Yeah, good point. No, good point. Good, good comments, good questions. Anybody else, anything?
I want to approve the concrete business amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-five cents for from Burlington Construction Incorporated, projects one through six and alternate projects two and three. Second. When was he going to start that, when this?
In the summer.
In the summer. Yes.
No, 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 no. Sorry, guys, can you go ahead and vote one more time?
What happened?
I got a little click happy, there's a little delay and then I got click happy, so, sorry. Operator error. Thank you.
Motion passes six zero. Move on to the next section for personnel. This is sections got superintendent, principal contracts, certified director contracts. And a couple retirements and then a some good news, rescind retirement request in there. There's a motion if we'd like to go into executive session to talk about personnel if we can. I think we've had information, I think, that's been sent out, but if there are any questions, you want to go back and talk? Motion without.
I'd like to move to go into the session for ten minutes.
Does motion move in, just per the words there, Michael, that we were talking there, the persons non-located personnel. So we have a motion for a ten minute executive session to discuss non-located personnel under common return to this open session in that room. A second.
Did you make the motion?
No, you, I just repeated what you said and asked him for a second for the motion to go back. Okay, now here in a second, motion fails. Move on to superintendent contract.
Make motion to approve contract with Craig Marshall, superintendent for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school years. Second.
Move our computers. Motion passes five one. Move on to principal contracts for all three building principals.
Motion for contract with Joey Grover, high school principal, Taylor Wilson, high school assistant principal, athletic director, Matthew Spring, middle school principal, and Darton Long, elementary school principal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five school years.
Second. And move our computers. Motion passes five one. Move to certified director contracts. I want to approve the contract with Lindsay Grass, special education director, Craig Coolman, technology director for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school years. And move our computers. Motion passes five one. Move on to item E to rescind retirement request.
This was terrific news today and I attached a document that, a letter from Donna Boland. It was a very complimentary letter. And so she is interested in coming back and we would love to have her back, I do believe. So pending your motion, your vote and moving forward.
Motion to rescind the retirement request of Donna Boland as Burlington High School. Got it.
Second. And move our computers. Motion passes six zero. Next agenda item is retirement for Suzanne Fossom, second grade teacher. I'll move to accept the retirement request of Suzanne Fossom as second grade teacher effective at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year with regret. Thirty-two years here.
One second.
Motion passes six zero. Next item is retirement of Dave Slu, all years of Burlington and thirty-four in education.
Motion to accept the retirement request of, oh, no, no, no. Motion to accept the retirement request of Dave Slu, BHS math and science teacher effective of at the end of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year with regret.
Second.
Almost had to make a retirement request.
Now, there you go, maybe.
Yep.
Oh, there it starts to go, yeah.
Motion passes six zero.
And we'll miss Dave and Suzanne, who wish them the best in the future.
Welcome back, Dawn.
And welcome back, Dawn, I guess.
I did the best, Dave, so.
Move on to results reporting.
For math.
Okay, I I want to take a little responsibility for this because I I really wanted to go back to this style of report with the PowerPoint. And I didn't get that information after the administrators and directors. They will do this for the January results report. We showed you the Edge of Climber information in the past, like last year, for example. And I don't think that that, you you see how we're using Edge of Climber. We shared that with you with individual student progress as well as with grade level progress. The problem with that is you don't necessarily get all of that information on a Wednesday or a Thursday when we make the board information public to you guys. So we'll go back to this for the January results reports and the and the reports in the in the future. You know, we have this program called Edge of Edge of Climber. It's a one-stop shop with a data warehouse of state assessments, map assessments, student grades, ACT scores and so on, so forth. So having said that, we'll go back and we'll put that results report to for in that format, the the PowerPoint format moving forward. So I apologize that I said that was my fault not getting the information to the administrators. So with that being said, I guess, Darla, and I can kind of try to tackle this with Matt and Jody and Taylor potentially coming a little bit later, so anyway.
So for our whole district is still taking a math test, so that's one of our pieces of data. Then we all take this Kansas assessment at the grade levels as required by the state. And the elementary, we are, we use AIMS Web for benchmarking. And then we also use, we also have Star Math that we do. I'm not sure if, I think the middle school does that at some of the grade levels as well. So we have some different charts on that. And the high school, of course, one of the tests for them is the ACT, which is on the PowerPoint. So we went with the dot, well, Christie has that, but I think we have a slide, Joe, you shared some data just to show like how we're stacking up there. Let's probably wait for that. Keep going. No, go, what are we having?
Level.
There you go. So this is just the five-year trend. It actually is for all seven different areas. You can see in twenty twenty-two, our school average for math is nineteen point nine, which is a half point above the state average there at nineteen point four. While there's a little bit of a drop, you know, from year to year. I can't explain that to you, but they did have almost all the kids that graduated last year, seventy-two.
Yes.
Seventy-four students that take that test, which is in part that the, you know, the state helps pay for that test for, where you take it one time. So that's a high percentage of participation. I really can't speak anymore to that. What there was on there is kind of what Jody shared about that as well. And then the next graph that's on there just shows the five-year trend as well. Percent who, what they consider ready for college-level coursework in terms of a percentage. So thirty-six percent of our kids show that they are ready for college-level coursework in the math versus the state at thirty-one percent. So, you know, anytime that we are doing higher than the state average, I think that's a plus. Not that there's not room for growth, but it's still, I mean, we're seeing lots of articles come out right now in education that are saying like the scores across the different assessments are taking a dip, which is probably to be expected with the fact that, you know, there's some loss of instruction for, you know, a period of time, so.
Well, interesting enough, I was kind of, the stuff that was coming out, they're talking about math, math and science scores are, you know, really dropping. So it appears that we have kind of maintained at least the state average there. My my big question is, is on the five-year averages in all of these, we see where it went from, of course, that was the first year and then we seem to have dropped down, you know, quite a, I don't want to say quite. But is it based on the number of the kids being tested?
We're testing everyone.
It's saying back to like twenty eighteen, that was like Kaylee graduating in twenty nineteen. And that was not, like, when she was a junior, everybody was not taking that, the state wasn't paying for that yet. So you're having, I mean, the number of the kids tested in the state is a some.
I think that's important, though, yeah.
I think that you're having more participation in this school, so it's taking probably a, rather than get all kids versus before when, you know, maybe not all families are going to pay sixty.
And I think the kids that were kind of calling ready or wanting to be calling ready were taking the ACT early on where other people that weren't quite as ready might have taken that. Anyways, I just kind of wanted to be able to explain that why that, why it all of a sudden dropped.
Also, one thing I don't have this factor into, sorry, didn't get into it really.
No.
I mean, I just know this from having a senior, but like some colleges now are being away from, like, there for a while. Like, it was a big thing, ACT was how you got your scholarship money, and that's also a trend that's kind of, that's not as much now, it's kind of either.
Been talking with Matt, I think those were only students that were needing to be assessed if they were struggling. They didn't assess all students. Because if students were, I guess, say, above grade level doing despite, there was really no need, if I remember correctly. There's no need to assess, we don't want an assessment overkill, if you will. So that's why those two dots might be quite a bit lower. If he ends up showing, I'll verify that with him here, but if not, I'll.
There's still going, he tested.
Okay.
And then we're we're doing well when we compare ourselves to the national norms. You know, we can look at that and kind of see when we look at some different reports that we don't get pulled into Edge of Climber, like how many kids we have below, how many kids we have below average, how many kids we have average or or above. And so like when I looked at mine, we had over sixty percent in grades two through four above, average or above. So we're still performing strong. I, you know, I can't speak to the other buildings because I don't have access to their data in there. But I think, you know, overall, our kids continue to do well and keep working to those who are struggling. The next couple graphs are specific to my building because we're the only building that does the AIMS benchmarking. So this kind of shows us where kids in the fall place on their benchmarks that are red are tier three. And those are the kids that we look at providing additional instructional supports to. The yellow is tier two and then green and blue, they're four. That figures that a little bit differently for kindergarten first graders, so they're not shown on there. If it was, you would see a large red bar for kindergarten. We have a lot of needs at that grade level this year, so we are really doubling down on our interventions there. And then the next graph for AIMS Web is on concepts and applications, which is more word-based problems, applications of math, so same thing. So this this test, one of the things we kind of call the temperature taker, it kind of tells us who we need to take a little closer look at and determine who gets those intervention supports. And so we just use that kind of triangulating approach for determining those needs in our building.
And again, thinking in terms of you want to see more blue and green, less red, that's the ideal scenario.
So one thing, whenever we look at our aims, like we look, when we look at it fall, completing the hundred benchmarks, we always do try to see if we're getting that red down as the year goes on. Historically, we do have a look at that, you know, this is, we just finished benchmark last week, but that's one of the ways that we kind of monitor our growth there. And then the last graph we have is our state assessments from the spring in math. Same thing, the red is showing kids that are at level one, which is the lowest level. Level two, three and four, we consider on on grade level or at benchmark. So level two is a good score, level three is at grade level, level four is at grade level with rigor attached to it. So smaller red is better.
And I know that the middle school and high school are looking at those red areas there that they have and having discussions and addressing area, addressing those areas. And one thing that I know, for example, the high school has put in place starting in the second semester is a math, I'm going to say a math intervention piece. And I don't know if Mrs. Grover put that in her report or not, but a math intervention piece as part of a, a student's, I'm going to say a student's class schedule. Because we have the ability to do that based on a schedule issue, a schedule, I guess it's a positive. And and I said, Jody can explain and can talk about that a little bit more if she ends up, if she would be, but they are looking at those two red areas because we've had heard, Taylor and Jody and I have had a conversation about those areas and even Matt and I about a couple of those red areas that we want to, we really want to focus on. Again, reminder like Darla said, three and four is advanced knowledge, if you will, for the state assessments. Two is is it's grade level appropriate. Again, you want to try to, you want to try to move kids from ones to twos. That's that's a big thing and and twos to threes if possible and threes to fours. If we, you're not going to move a kid from one to four in a year, which is probably not going to happen unless there were some sort of dramatic issues that we're dealing with when they have to test, you know, the, you know, the state assessment, this test. So again, trying to move kids one level is very, very important in progress, kind of like what Darla had mentioned, so.
One thing, this doesn't show on this graph, but I did pull like our district report for math. And so like comparing ourselves to the state, again, this doesn't show on that graph, but at grade three, we were. This doesn't show on that graph, but at grade three, we were fourteen points above the state average, at grade four, we were thirteen points above the state average. Grade five was below the state average by nine points, grade six was one point below, grade seven was thirteen points above, grade eight was three points below and grade ten was at the state average. So the, you know, the trends, if you're comparing this to other districts in the state, you know, we're, you know, we're at the, at or above the state average in almost every grade level. So it doesn't mean there's not room for improvement, just, you know, if you see a big red bar, I'm like, ooh, like, you know, it could just be, you know. You also have to consider the test and, you know, how everybody else is doing on it again, we had some lost instruction, so it takes time to fill some of those gaps.
So when I read that in Jody's report on the, the math intervention deal, are those kids gonna be required to take that, are they just gonna put them in that class?
I remember right, yes, if they are, yes.
For struggle?
Yeah, if they are struggling, it's gonna be a requirement. Other questions that you have? One thing that's interesting Darla did mention is that you could, because math is the first results report with math, so you can see was there growth? Cause that's what you, that's what you guys wanna see is what, you wanna make sure that there's growth occurring and our staff is addressing the students. I can, I can assure you, they are addressing and using Edge of Climber effectively, especially, especially to make sure the students are progressing and, and developing and growing. Other questions?
If there's anything, thank you.
If there's anything specific that you guys wanna see, like in the next round of the reading, a certain, certain thing, I mean, just let us know because I'm sure we can get it.
I'm hoping to accept the math, we also offer a report as a reasonable interpretation of the Board of Education's results policy. Name and vote our computer. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to closing item, Steve Breachman? Again, I'd like to thank the Rotary and the appreciate for the donations, because Breach is a pro parent, that's awesome.
And for carrying up with ideas for our sub.
Sub, I think. Every idea is, we're talking about. Okay, me and Jordan.
Thank you for coming along here, really appreciate that. Unfortunately.